Well, welcome everyone. At 101, we are going to call to order the 418th meeting of the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission on today, February 3rd, 2022. We want to welcome everybody who's joining us today. And as we so often do, we want to begin our work this afternoon with remembering what the mission of DEQ is. And DEQ's mission is to be a leader in restoring, maintaining, and enhancing the quality of Oregon's air, land, and water. So throughout our work today, we're going to see what we can do to advance that mission. As we begin, let's let the record show that all commissioners are present. And commissioners, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda, also our leadership has. Do we anticipate any need to amend the agenda? Doesn't look like it, but we will just remind everyone that sometimes that does seem to be a good idea or necessary as we move throughout the meeting. So while we always try to keep our public sessions where the public can speak with us in the same timeframe, we do sometimes move our agenda items around just a little bit. I think everybody's getting used to these Zoom protocols, and I have all of our main participants pinned, as they say. But if I happen not to see your raised hand, please don't feel at all shy about speaking up and letting me know that you have a question or a comment as we proceed today. All right. With that said, commissioners, we've all been provided the draft meeting minutes, and I hope everybody's had an opportunity to review those. In your review, do you see anything that is necessary to be amended? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
This is Commissioner Kyle. I move that the minutes be accepted.
Do we have a second?
Good, Commissioner Brasso.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or approval. I said that a little awkwardly. Any disagreements? Same sign. Hearing none, our minutes are approved. All right. So our first informational and discussion item today are about our commissioner reports and our liaison roles. There are several kind of coordination and liaison roles that members of the EQC have played over the years to enhance our work and our communications and our relationships with some of the sister agencies. And so we've had liaison roles with the Oregon Department of Forestry, with the Board of Agriculture, and also the EQC has an official role, a voting member seat on the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. And then there is a relatively new internal audit committee within DEQ that the EQC has been very supportive of this new internal audit role. So with a new and a returning commissioner, it seemed like it would be a really good time to revisit these roles and see if we could perhaps redistribute some of our efforts and if people had some specific interest in these different positions. So I'd be happy to open up the floor and let people share their thoughts on where they think they might be helpful. Commissioner Kyle.
Thank you. I'll just say that I've been the liaison with the OWEB board, which has been a very exciting and interesting position, but I've also been with the internal audit committee. So I'm looking at kind of some of the new commissioners, whether you would like to kind of split up some of these duties. I know I reached out to Greg specifically around the OWEB board because I think there's a lot of synergy with your expertise in water, but I wouldn't mind sharing some of this load, just to put it out there.
That is perfectly fair. Director, and then we'll go to Commissioner Slusher.
Thank you, Chair George. For the record, Richard Whitman, director of Oregon DEQ. I want to say just a little bit more context for this conversation. Two of these four positions, we are really more along the lines of must haves. The internal audit committee chair is one of those positions, and thank you, Commissioner Kyle, for taking on that work that we're getting started with on internal audit. The watershed enhancement board position also is statutory, and it's a voting member of the watershed enhancement board, and so that is something we take seriously and really need to have somebody in that role as well. So Commissioner Kyle's been doing both of those. Thank you, Commissioner Kyle. The liaison roles with forestry and agriculture are less formal. There's nothing in statute. It's more a matter of the history of the agencies and practice and wanting to build a good relationship between the agencies. Commissioner Mosby, before he left us last fall, was serving in that role with the Board of Forestry and really helped us, along with Chair George, do a lot of work with the Board of Forestry on the agreement that we reached last fall with them on how we're coordinating our water quality work. There also has been smoke work around, smoke management in prescribed fire between DEQ and the Department of Forestry that that liaison role is helped with over the years. The Board of Forestry, Jim Johnson, was the liaison to Environmental Quality Commission from the Board of Forestry, and he has stepped out of that role also. So we're at a transition point, and there can be some discussion about how much time is really needed for that role. With the Board of Agriculture, we really haven't, I'm trying to remember back, we haven't had the same level of participation really on both sides here for a couple of years now. And that said, I think we are entering into a period where there is going to be more work, collaborative work to do between the Board of Agriculture and the Environmental Quality Commission. The Board of Agriculture is not a decision-making body. It is advisory to the director of the Department of Agriculture. It does not adopt rules, but I will tell you that the director listens very carefully to guidance from the Board of Agriculture. So I hope that's helpful to the conversation, just to give you a little bit more granularity about what's involved in these meetings. Roughly speaking, the Board of Forestry meets about the same frequency as the Environmental Quality Commission. I believe the Board of Agriculture meets a little less frequently. Thanks.
Thanks, Director. Commissioner Slusher.
Thank you, Chair George. First, I want to say I absolutely understand Commissioner Kyle's concerns and the time constraints that go into serving in so many different positions. Since I'm new to the commission, new to the EQC, and I'm still kind of getting my feet under me, I feel like the OWEB role probably isn't the best role for me to volunteer for right now. I would put my name in the hat for the Department of Forestry. I have some experience with forest law, but I'm also more than happy to defer to any of the other commissioners that are really interested in that position and feel like there's work there that needs to be done that they can contribute to.
Thank you very much. I think that's a great suggestion. Vice Chair Brasso.
I'm hoping for the days soon here where we can meet in person again, because I do appreciate both the meetings that we've had with the Board of Forestry, but also the Board of Ag too, and the opportunities where we've had to visit sites together. I know that there's a little bit of mapping, mapping it out again in terms of what's a sort of a relationship that makes sense, but I would be interested in the Board of Forestry, Board of Ag liaison role and working with the agency as well as our relevant counterparts there to just figure out what's the right cadence or meetings for the time. So I hope that can happen when we're back in person, since so much of this is about connecting and getting to see the operations that are playing out. But I would appreciate that. And what I'm hearing, Richard, from you, and what I think I've understood is that there's not necessarily the expectation to attend all their board meetings, but figuring out those relevant opportunities within their board meetings where there's an overlap with what things need to be working on. And so assuming that's the case, I am interested in doing that and finding a counterpart there that maybe will end up working with us.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Yeah, Commissioner Addington.
I can see I've made a mistake by waiting here. I'm going to learn one of these days. Molly, talk to me about the time commitment for OWEB.
Yeah, so it is a time commitment. They meet two-day meeting, board meetings. The schedule is up for the year on their website, so there's going to be two days in April, two days in July, and two days in October. So typically, there's kind of a meeting every quarter. You are a voting member, and why I think you would actually really kind of enjoy this is it is about giving money to the local communities to do restoration projects. So in that part, I really enjoyed it. I learned what the work is being done on the ground in the different communities, and you always kind of get the reports out of the progress that's been done. And in that regard, it's almost the flip to what we do here at DEQ. So it's been really enjoyable, and it's got a wonderful board. It has a new director, Lisa, who comes from the Department of Ag, so the whole organization is shifting a little bit, but it's a big board, and so there's a lot of non-voting federal liaisons there as well as a lot of Oregonians. And you know, there's a board book. It is a time commitment, but it's an enjoyable time commitment. Not sure how much more honest you want me to be. But I do enjoy it. As somebody who is busy and crammed in, I loathe to give it up, but I do think it would, between that and the audit committee, I think OWEB is the better gig.
And so I'll say this, and I indicated this earlier to Stephanie, but I mean, I'm really comfortable, you know, I think I did or was technically supposed to be doing Ag my first go around, but I didn't do it very much. So I'm happy to sort of do whatever. I'm concerned about time commitment and just capacity on OWEB. That's my issue for sure. I really am interested in that, that agency and the work that they do. It's great. It's the stuff I like to see, and so I'm interested. I'm just worried about the time commitment. But with, now Chair George, I'll also say, are you in the mix here on anything? Because I'm happy to hear your ideas as well.
Well, thank you very much. So I think that's a, your comments and concerns about time commitment are absolutely legitimate. I think everybody who's serving on this commission right now has other, you know, professional commitments during the day, and so we truly have to take these things into consideration. Thank you for asking. I do not think I could make the commitment to the OWEB board, and it's not for a lack of interest. Getting to have worked as a granting agency in the past, I can say that giving away money for excellent work is a great thing to do and something I love to do. But with my additional time commitments as chair and my commitments outside of here, I do not have the capacity to take on that role at this time. So if you need a little time to find out more about exactly what that time commitment would look like, and if you can accommodate it, I think we would be happy to give you that time and let you check back. I do want to kind of have the flexibility to, when necessary, assist other commissioners checking in with the Board of Ag, checking in with Board of Forestry, and facilitating conversations, kind of like I did when we had Wade with us. And when we were really working on the MOA with forestry, I attended all those meetings. So I'd like to kind of keep that freedom in what little bit of time flexibility I have. So I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Addington.
Yes, I feel like the process of elimination is in full effect here. Sam, I want to hear what Sam has to say before I say anything else.
Yes, Vice Chair Brasso.
I think it was maybe a question to Molly, because part of, I hear, I think the process of elimination is fair. You might have missed the boat. What I'm thinking about in some regards, though, Greg, is, you know, I know I've been, I've thought about OWEB, and I know, you know, we've, I'm not going to try to compare my, I think we've all got so many things going on. I'm just trying to think about what does it mean, Molly, from your perspective of what it takes to kind of get into that seat and what's a, sort of what's a, I know you've been in that role for a good while now, and so what may be, whether there's a place to say an 18 months, or when is the right point in time where we can have this as a check-in to say, okay, is there a right time to consider, maybe earlier than we might otherwise consider time to check in and say, hey, should we switch this up sooner? So that's sort of what, just hearing you, Greg, and thinking about, is there a way to rotate that role sooner is what I'm wondering up.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. I, as much as I would like to kind of share the load a little bit, I am able to make it all work. That being said, there's an opportunity here to share the load. So I too am under time constraints and trying to fit it in. I've been able to do that. It would be nice maybe to transition within the year, so it's not something that needs to happen, you know, right away or even make the decision this meeting for more conversations. Like this board, the OWEB did a really nice introduction and onboarding and kind of explaining the process, because I would say that what's been, what was the learning curve there was all of the different kind of funding mechanisms and what was and wasn't involved with all of those. But there's been a nice longstanding overlap. They've organized the board and managed it really well. So there's a lot of support, administrative support, people to talk to and lean on that are experienced on the board as well as in the staff. So in that regard, it's been a gentle, long onboarding in many ways, because sometimes the grants happen every two years. Half of the meetings are going to be virtual, half will be in-person. I think one of the things that I have enjoyed the most is actually the in-person, because there's always an educational component and visiting funders on the ground and seeing the work that's actually being done. And in that regard, I feel like I've gotten a much deeper appreciation of, you know, just the diversity of the work that's done in Oregon, the diversity of the watersheds, the people that are involved, how the organizations work together, the importance of collaboration, and who's making all these decisions. So in that regard, it has been highly educational for me and really valuable, and it's been an honor to serve it, and so I'm happy to continue to serve it. But it's also, it does, some of these meetings that I'm having, it does remind me of conversations I've had with Greg. So that was why I immediately kind of thought of you, is, you know, a lot of this is how this affects rural Oregonians and how the importance of the landowners and getting the landowners involved and the collaboration that goes on with that. It echoes a lot of the conversations I've had with you, Greg, which is why I kind of leaned out first to you, but it is a time commitment. It's less of a time commitment than I would say that the DEQ board is, but.
Commissioner Addington.
I kind of froze when Sam was talking, so unless he volunteered to do it when I was froze, if it's appropriate, and I think what I'd like to do is, and Richard, tell me if that is appropriate or not. I mean, I've known Lisa Hanson a very long time, and is it okay for me to visit with her? And then, and then maybe Commissioner Kyle with you a little bit more, and then just to make sure that I can make it work, and then go from there.
Director.
Yeah, that's perfectly appropriate, Greg, and I think probably recommended. And as Commissioner Kyle said, there's nothing specific driving the timing of this. I think, that said, it would be great, it would be great to have a target for making a decision on some of these things, maybe by the next commission meeting, the next EQC meeting. But that'll give, that gives you two months essentially to have some conversations and make sure you understand what you're getting into.
That was going to be my recommendation, is to set up that timeframe ideally for the next commission meeting. Do you think that that could work, Commissioner Addington?
Yeah, that's plenty of time. I appreciate that.
Great. Well, that sounds like a plan, and it sounds like we do have some brave volunteers for liaising with the Board of Forestry and agriculture. And so unless anybody's particularly interested in those, I would move to it that we accept those volunteers. And I think that this is just a great thing to revisit. You know, in the past, our predecessors, there was this habit of participating in all of each other's meetings. And I think one of the things we've discussed is what is probably more important than doing that is to make the contacts, to have that open door, to know who to call and who to email and who to reach out to when things come up. And so I think that's really more what we're trying to focus on. And if you can, sit in on one another's meetings, that's great, and those folks, of course, are always welcome at ours, but we think it's really about developing the relationships that is the more important part of that. All right, so we're going to check in on this at our next board meeting. Anything else on this topic? Director?
Yeah, real quickly, the next Board of Forestry meeting is on March 9th. So Commissioner Slusher, I'll send you, I'll send you an email with some information and also contact for Cal Mukamoto, the state forester, as well as their board chair, and I'll do the same for you, Commissioner Brasso, give you contacts, meeting dates, that sort of thing. And if you want to have more conversation around degree of involvement and areas where there's overlap between the agencies, I'm happy to do that with you as well.
Great. Thank you, Director Whitman.
All right, thanks, everybody. So this is also our time where we, as commissioners, share just any, you know, meetings or communications we've had that we think, you know, are relevant or might be for the good of our larger work together to share, and some of that is often updates on these liaison positions. So does anybody have something to share with us about outside work that would be good to inform the work we do here together? Director Whitman? You still have your hand up?
No, I do not, Chair George. That was a leftover. My apologies.
That's okay. We got that out of the way for today. Anybody, who else? Commissioner Kyle.
Yeah, well, I can share that there was an OWEB meeting just last week, and it was a fun meeting because it was one where we were giving out a lot of, approving a lot of the grants. Some of the interesting things that came up that you might want to go over there and look at their materials was there's an Oregon Tidegate partnership that was formed in 2016, and it involves kind of understanding the Tidegate inventory and figuring out ways to help improve some of that aging infrastructure. So there was a new granting mechanism that goes with that, which I think will have a big impact as that work gets done on our, the fish populations, especially in those estuary environments. So that was kind of a nice advancement to see. And then there was also a report that was on their focused investment partnerships and showing the progress that's been made in the last couple of years by focusing investments in specific regions to really kind of get at a more holistic restoration plan. And so there's nice little stories there, if you want to kind of see some success stories of where that money has been spent and the ecological benefits that are being restored. So those are two nice features from the meeting that I wanted to share. And then just, you know, the other hat I wear is down here is the professor's OSU. It's been in the news, but we finally did get, we received funding from the NIEHS for a five-year center on children's environmental health research translation. So that's going to hopefully be able to accelerate some of the science into action, and we're going to be working largely through the extension networks and early childhood organizations to try to implement some programs and practices that help to protect children from environmental insults. And if we can prove that it works here in Oregon, we have the opportunity to disseminate that quite quickly across the nation. So you might be hearing more about that in the news, but that is through my job down here at Oregon State and bringing together folks from different disciplines down here that specialize in kind of that research translation. So it's going to be fun, a new, a new chapter in the research portfolio, but it's going to be a good one.
That's very exciting. Thank you for sharing. Well, I'll just share one little topic that might be a bit tangential to our work, but was, I just think, really meaningful. So there are a few areas where our work in protecting the environment and how it affects, you know, human health and Oregonians kind of overlaps very directly with human health. Commissioner Kyle certainly just shared one. You know, smoke and inhalation issues often bring that up. Cleanup often brings that up. And occasionally, we don't get this before, it's too often, but indoor air issues and those sorts of exposures can overlap those areas. And recently, I had the opportunity to talk with local county officials and leadership and folks who are trying to work on the housing crisis, which is just so prevalent across the state. It's not just urban communities, it's rural communities, it's everywhere. There's not enough houses. And even if, you know, folks who have trouble finding housing get vouchers, you know, for free housing, often there just isn't somewhere, there isn't a place for them to move into. And one of the things that the tribe was discussing with some of the local county people who are trying to work on these housing issues is for rental units where they may have turned over and there may be contamination issues inside the units, and those can be a variety of things. But one of them, again, this is where our indoor safety overlaps with health, is, you know, this opioid crisis and the meth prevalence in our communities, that when somebody moves out and rental units are tested, houses, apartments, condos, whatever it may be, that can really, really slow down, and sometimes it takes six months, a year, to get a housing unit cleaned up so that another family can move in. And there's just, it was hearing how, what a substantial, both monetary and technical endeavor it is to get those units cleaned up so that they're safe for the next people or families, and to hear how that kind of indoor environment overlaps with our community issues surrounding addiction, our community issues surrounding housing crisis. We could just really see how these issues all come together and are exacerbating such a difficult problem in our communities. So I just thought I would mention that. It sounds like it is a challenge all over the state and one where there are not very many entities who can do that kind of cleanup, and so it really is a huge challenge. So we'll continue to do what we can to work with everybody around us on these difficult issues. Commissioners, any other updates for the good of the group? Yes, Commissioner Addington.
Yeah, Chair George, I don't really have any updates per se of anything sort of connected with the EQC work, but, and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I'll ask Richard, just two things that I want to, that are on my, like, list. A lot of media today about Lake Abert and what's happening there, and if and when it's appropriate, can we get a briefing on that or some kind of, you know, what's the status of that? And then the other thing is, just sort of back to our last topic a little bit, but for maybe Commissioner Slusher and myself, just the internal audit committee, can we just at some point have a little discussion about what that is and what the purpose of that committee is? That'd be great.
Chair George, yes, Commissioner Addington, be happy to do that. We'll do at least a first run by those, each of those two things tomorrow in the director's report. And so we certainly can give a quick briefing on Lake Abert and a thumbnail sketch of the work that is currently going on around internal audit and a little bit about the structure. a thumbnail sketch of the work that is currently going on around internal audit and a little bit about the structure and the vision behind that work also. Be happy to do.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we are done with our reports. So our first action item of the day is the Regional Haze State Implementation Plan. And I think Ali Mirzakalili, Michael Orman, and Karen Williams are going to talk us through this agenda item. Welcome, everyone.
And Chair George, this is Stephanie Caldera, your Commission Assistant. I don't believe Air Quality Division Administrator Ali Mirzakalili has joined our meeting yet today, but I would ask Michael Orman, the manager for the section, if he and Karen Williams, the other main presenter, would like to proceed, we can start that item now if they feel comfortable starting that.
Well, and in fairness to Ali, we are ahead of schedule. So what do you think, Michael and Karen?
Let me see if I can use a virtual hook to pull him into the meeting real, real fast. And if not, we can go ahead and start.
See, Ali knows us so well that he would have no reason to expect, wow, they're going to be 10 minutes ahead, you know, so we have to, we have to give him his due as well.
And Chair George, Division Administrator Ali Mirzakalili has just joined. I will assign him the presenter rights if for just a moment, and then he will be able to join our meeting today.
Thank you. Welcome, Ali.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair George, Commissioners, Director Whitman. Sorry for my tardy connection. For the record, my name is Ali Mirzakalili, and I am the Air Quality Division Administrator. We are here today asking you to adopt Oregon's Regional Haze State Implementation Plan for the period 2018 to 2028. With me today are Karen Williams, Senior Planner, and Michael Orman, our Planning Section Chief, to present the the material and answer your questions. We have a lot of material to cover and only 30 minutes to do it. And and considering that, I'm just going to get out of the way and turn it over to Karen to dive right in. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ali. Commissioners, good afternoon, Karen Williams, Air Quality Planner. Next slide, please. Regional haze is defined in the Clean Air Act as visibility impairment that is caused by the emission of air pollutants from numerous anthropogenic or human generated sources located over a wide geographic area. The Clean Air Act established visibility goals in certain wilderness areas in national parks called Class One areas. The 1999 Regional Haze Rule amended in 2017 requires that states establish plans to improve visibility in Class One areas to natural conditions by 2064. Oregon completed its first Regional Haze Plan in 2010 and updated it in 2017. And today, we are presenting the Regional Haze Implementation Plan for the 2018 through 2028 period. Next slide, please. Oregon has several Class One areas that are protected by the Regional Haze Rule. And on this map, you see Oregon's 12 Class One areas in dark green, including our one national park, Crater Lake. The Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Area, which straddles the Columbia River between Oregon and Washington, is not a Class One area, but Oregon has an agreement with the Columbia River Gorge Commission to manage visibility in the gorge through the Regional Haze Program. And the yellow triangles on the map are the locations where we have monitors that measure visibility impairment. Next slide, please. Haze is formed from emissions from both natural and anthropogenic sources. The specific haze pollutants that we're talking about in this rulemaking and for this regional haze plan are particulate matter, nitrogen oxides, and sulfur dioxide. Next slide, please. We structured the Regional Haze Plan to align with the requirements in the Regional Haze Rule itself. Chapter one describes the Class One areas in the monitoring network. Chapter two covers the current and projected visibility, and this also serves as our five year progress report. Chapter three covers stationary source sources and the evaluation of the controls on the emissions at those sources. Chapter four is Oregon's long term strategy for reducing haze pollutants from stationary as well as area and mobile sources. Chapter five, in that chapter, we compare the expected outcomes of implementing those strategies to the visibility goals for 2028. And in chapter six, we cover Oregon's consultations as well as our responses to public comment. Next slide, please. Implementation of the Regional Haze Program is a long term effort. I mentioned that the goal is to attain natural visibility by 2064. We measure our progress in this program by charting what steady or uniform progress would look like from visibility conditions starting in the year 2000 to those natural visibility conditions achieved in 2064. And this uniform rate is referred to as the glide path. Milestones along the way are called reasonable progress goals. Next slide, please. In earlier regional haze plans and updates, Oregon established those reasonable progress goals for the year 2018. And we report in this current regional haze plan that we met those goals in 2018. In this figure, we show that with the green and the light yellow dots at the improved monitoring locations. At the green sites, current visibility impairment is more than 5% less than the glide path, and that's good. And at the yellow sites, we're still meeting reasonable progress goals, but the margin is not as large as at the green sites. Next slide, please. The 2028 projection shows us a different story. Those projections show Oregon not meeting visibility goals in southern Oregon and the central Cascade Wilderness areas in 2028. And there's also a decrease in visibility that's projected for the northeast part of the state. To meet the requirements of the Regional Haze Rule, Oregon has to show that it will be able to reduce haze forming emissions enough to meet reasonable progress goals for 2028. And the following sections of the Regional Haze Plan lay out what our strategies are for doing that. Next slide, please. Chapter three of the Regional Haze Plan lays out the process by which DEQ evaluated stationary source emissions. Recall that in the Division 223 rules, we established the first screening threshold at Q over D equals five or the total emissions divided by the distance to the nearest Class One area. Sources exceeding that threshold had to complete a four factor analysis. Chapter three then describes the analysis of those pollution controls based on the required four factors. Those factors, again, recall, are the cost of the control, the time to install the control, the remaining useful life of the emission unit, and other non-air and energy effects of installing and operating those controls. Please recall that Division 223 in Division 223, we set the cost effectiveness threshold for controls at $10,000 per ton of pollution reduced. And finally, recall that the total emissions and cost effectiveness were conservatively determined based on plant site emission limits. These are called P cells. And P cells are the maximum amount that a facility may emit, allowing for a facility's growth. Next slide, please. This figure depicts the outcome of the 32 facility facilities that screened in at Q over D equals five or greater. Seven facilities initially lowered P cells, so Q over D was less than five and did not have to do a four factor analysis. Of the remaining facilities, six of them found controls not cost effective and DEQ agreed. And then DEQ negotiated compliance with the remaining facilities to achieve necessary emission reductions. Now, recall that Division 223 allows for alternative compliance to achieve emission reductions. And that alternative compliance may include giving up potential future emissions, and it may also include changes to operation of emission units or replacement of those emission units. Next slide, please. However, emission reductions will be achieved in order to satisfy the requirements of the Regional Haze Rule, DEQ has to show EPA that any emission reductions are enforceable. And pardon me, DEQ makes those reductions enforceable through permit modifications and other orders to facilities. The Division 223 rules provided DEQ the authority to issue those orders. And Appendix E of the Regional Haze Plan contains those documents. Slide please. This is a summary of the results of the orders that DEQ issued to facilities. The orders require the reduction of 11,000 tons of P cell reductions per year, eliminating the use of number six fuel oil and six facilities installing continuous monitoring devices. At least six facilities will install controls and at least one will replace an emission unit with a cleaner one. And the reason that we say at least and those pluses on the slide are because some agreements have contingencies. For example, a control would be installed or emission unit would be replaced if reductions can't be achieved by other means like operational changes. Next slide, please. Chapter four of the Regional Haze Plan lays out new and existing strategies that DEQ will implement to reduce haze forming emissions from all sources. So that includes the stationary sources that we just described, as well as area sources and mobile sources. And among these strategies are new regulations, like the recently passed Advanced Clean Trucks Rule, as well as ongoing incentive programs like our Clean Vehicle Rebate Program. And DEQ also plans new rulemakings and cross agency collaboration on burning and agricultural emission reductions. Next slide, please. Oregon's Regional Haze Rule has to show that implementing the elements of our long term strategy will allow us to continue making reasonable reasonable progress toward natural visibility. Chapter five of the Regional Haze Plan makes that demonstration. The reasonable progress goals for 2028 are based on a regional model developed for all Western states through the Western Regional Air Partnership, or RAP. This model predicts 2028 visibility when controls are installed at stationary sources and some regional emission reductions take place. And an example of that would be reductions in marine fuel emissions. This graph shows the projected 2028 visibility relative to the glide path at the Hell's Canyon Wilderness Area. Generally, the predicted 2028 visibility is lower than the glide path for Oregon Class One areas in the northern part of the state. That would be Mount Hood, the Eagle Cap Wilderness, and the Hell's Canyon Wilderness Areas. Visibility projections at the Class One areas in the central and the southern part of Oregon lie on or slightly above the glide path. And that would be the Three Sisters, Crater Lake, and Kelmeopsis Wilderness Areas. DEQ has committed to attaining reasonable progress goals and acknowledges in the Regional Haze Plan that meeting those visibility goals in 2028 will require the implementation of all elements of our long term strategy, including policies to reduce emissions from area and mobile sources, as well as stationary sources.
Excuse me, Karen. Commissioner Kyle?
Hi, Karen. I just had a question on exactly what this graph is showing us. The glide path is that bright blue line that is cutting through the red lines? Is that? And then the projected is?
Yeah, pardon me. The red line, the the long red line going from the upper left to the lower right. And in the legend of the graph, it's called uniform rate of progress, and that is the glide path.
Okay. And then Oregon's data is the EQ projection pieces?
Let's see. I mean, Oregon's data is essentially everything else except for the gray line that goes along the bottom. The red line is the glide path for what are called most impaired days. And the gray line that's sort of horizontal across the bottom is essentially comparing projected 2028 visibility on clearest days. So that one is the the gray line is showing that we don't have degradation on the clearest days. And the red line is showing that we are making progress on the most impaired visibility days.
And that we're well below actually the glide line meaning that we're doing better than?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. If we don't have any more questions, we can go to the next slide.
Go right ahead.
So in addition to meeting the Regional Haze Rule requirements, DEQ expects the implementation of the Regional Haze Plan long term strategy will have indirect and beneficial public health and fiscal effects on communities, especially those communities near Class One areas, often rural communities, and those communities that live near stationary sources. Next slide, please. DEQ chose to consider potential effects on vulnerable populations as an element in assessing the non-air and environmental effects of pollution controls, that fourth factor. That you will find this analysis in Section 3.6 of the Regional Haze Plan. Very briefly, DEQ calculated indicators of population vulnerability based on the demographics of populations within 2.5 kilometers of the stationary sources that would be regulated. And then compared those indicators to statewide averages. To our knowledge, Oregon is, will be the first state to include such an assessment in a regional haze state implementation plan. Next slide, please. We'd like to highlight just a few areas where DEQ exercised discretion in its regional haze planning process. First, we chose to use relatively conservative screening and threshold values to capture the biggest contributors of regional haze for an in-depth analysis of their potential pollution controls. Again, recall that sources were screened in based on their maximum potential emissions and a cost effectiveness threshold set at $10,000 per ton of pollution reduced. A second area of discretion was allowing alternative compliance to achieve emission reductions, and I've described that in earlier slides. A third area was DEQ's choice to negotiate agreements and orders ahead of the Public Notice SIP to be able to provide certainty as well as to demonstrate enforceability. And fourth, many other states chose to what's do what's called adjusting the glide path to discount the visibility effects from international emissions and prescribed fires. And Oregon chose not to do that. We felt that this would essentially move the goalposts for what constitutes natural visibility in 2064 and that an unadjusted glide path best represented the conditions that our long term strategy needed to address. Next slide, please. The Regional Haze Rule has explicit consultation requirements. Much of this consultation was facilitated by Oregon's participation in the Western Regional Air Partnership, as I've mentioned. For tribal consultation, DEQ followed Oregon's State Tribal Government to Government Relations Law, as well as Regional Haze requirements. DEQ met with California, Nevada, Idaho, Montana, and Washington formally, and engaged with other states through the Western Regional Air Partnership. And the Regional Haze Rule specifically requires early engagement and consultation with federal land managers so that they can have an opportunity for meaningful input early in the process. Chapter six of the Regional Haze Plan describes these consultations and also compiled DEQ's responses to the federal land manager comments. Next slide, please. In addition to those consultations, the Regional Haze Plan was open for public comment from late August until November 1st, and that included a 30-day extension. We held a public hearing on October 25th last year. And throughout the public comment process, we received 400, about 460 written and oral comments. And about 440 of those 460 were similar email messages. Next slide, please. DEQ's response to comments are summarized in pages 21 through 58 of your staff report, but I'll highlight just a few comment areas here today. EPA, the agency that will approve or disapprove of the Oregon's Regional Haze Plan, had three particular concerns. They noted two Sapphos that lacked enforceable emission rate or a compliance date. They noted other Sapphos that did not include monitoring and reporting to enforce P-cell reductions. And they noted that DEQ should enforce through the SIP existing controls at facilities where DEQ had deemed that there were no cost-effective additional controls. So in response, DEQ negotiated Sappho or stipulated agreements and orders. We negotiated amendments to those Sapphos and incorporated monitoring, record-keeping, and reporting requirements from permits into the SIP. So that's how we responded to EPA's first two concerns. This does mean, in incorporating those permit conditions in the SIP, does mean when those conditions change, and they will, because the permits will be modified, that this will be a SIP revision. So we will be bringing those SIP revisions to you for approval after required public notice. DEQ did not agree with EPA that existing controls needed to be included in the SIP in order to be enforceable. We did, however, in the SIP, reference the permits and provided specific information about the existing controls that did in fact have to be maintained. Next slide, please. Well, several commenters approved of the screening process and the cost thresholds that DEQ used to identify facilities that were required to reduce emissions. And those commenters included favorable comments from the National Park Service. Nearly all commenters, including the National Park Service, opposed the use of alternative compliance to meet regional haze requirements. The commenters asserted that only installing cost-effective controls identified through the four-factor analysis would meet regional haze requirements. In response, DEQ asserted that the Division 223 rules did allow for alternative compliance at DEQ's discretion. And alternative compliance such as P-cell reduction to screen out from further regional haze requirements was an option for all facilities from, right from the beginning of DEQ's second round of regional haze planning. We did acknowledge, however, the difference, acknowledging the difference between reduction in actual emissions now and long-term prevention of future emissions. But we also asserted that in the context of the Regional Haze Program's goal to attain natural visibility by 2064, that such a long-term strategy is appropriate and effective. And in response to those same comments, we also added additional explanation in the State Implementation Plan itself in Section 3.7 to explain DEQ's rationale behind its alternative compliance decisions. Next slide, please. About five commenters submitted comments about DEQ's long-term strategy to address visibility impairment from burning wood, either through prescribed burning on forest land, agricultural burning, or residential heating. And to respond to those comments that DEQ received generally about smoke and smoke management, we included additional wood smoke reduction strategies in our long-term strategy and provided additional detail about agency coordination and rulemaking around planning for, rulemaking around open burning and smoke management. Next slide, please. I think we're, yes, thanks Stephanie. So with that background, DEQ recommends to the commission to adopt the 2018 through 2028 Regional Haze State Implementation Plan. That is in Attachment D of your report, to approve incorporating the Regional Haze Plan into the Oregon State Implementation Plan under OAR 340, 240, to adopt the proposed rules in Chapter A of, in Attachment A, as part of Chapter 340 of the Oregon Administrative Rules, and to direct DEQ to submit the approved 2018 through 2028 Regional Haze Plan to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for approval.
Commissioner Slusher.
Thank you Chair George. I have a question I was hoping you could answer. You touched on this briefly. But, so some of the commenters expressed concerns over the effectiveness of the PSL, P-cell reductions and alternative compliance in reducing emissions in comparison to installing mandatory emissions controls. And one of the commenters asserted that the alternative compliance agreements would allow many or even most stationary sources that are covered by the stipulated agreements to exceed their 2017 baseline emissions levels. And I was wondering if you could first tell me if that's accurate? And if so, could it potentially prevent the state from achieving reasonable progress toward the regional haze targets? Or are you confident that those mechanisms are sufficient to reduce emissions and ensure compliance?
Commissioner Slusher, thank you for the question. To the first question, is it possible that facilities could increase their emissions over their 2017 actuals? Yes, that is, that is possible. To the question, are we confident that we can meet reasonable progress goals in 2028? Yes, we are confident that we can reach those. And that is a combination of several factors. One is indeed the controls that are being installed on facilities. The second is implementation of area source strategies and mobile source strategies. And we fully acknowledge that all strategies will need to be implemented to meet reasonable progress goals. But we have committed to achieving those reasonable progress goals. And we will have, we are required to submit a five-year status report. And actually, that's not five years from now, because we're already a couple of years into the planning period. So we will be required to report on that in just a few years, how we're doing in making progress towards meeting those goals in 2028.
Okay, thank you. And so there will presumably then be an opportunity to course correct if it turns out that these stationary source emissions haven't decreased and are preventing the state from making reasonable progress.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Addington.
Thanks, hi Karen. A couple of things, and I'm sorry to just like go back to basics here. I'm gonna play the new card again as long as I can. When I look at the, I started reading this and I read the, I'm just trying to understand the difference between the 223 rules, the Division 223 that happened back in July when I wasn't here, to what we're doing now. And if I look at the fiscal, the statement of fiscal and economic impact, it says, "The proposed rule has no fiscal or economic impact. It simply approves submission of the rules" that EQC has already separately approved and orders and other plan elements DEQ sent, submitted to EPA. So what are we? Are we even arguing or debating the components of this plan? Or is this simply us saying we're submitting this already developed plan to EPA?
Well, let's see, let me piece that apart a little bit. I mean, certainly, your comments on the adequacy of this plan to meet those reasonable progress goals that Commissioner Slusher was just referring to, that that is up for your you know, consideration. The reference that you made Commissioner Addington to the fiscal effects is that the decision that's before you is adopting this plan and directing DEQ to submit it to EPA for approval. And that that action in itself is what's up for decision today and that that does not carry any fiscal effects. It's simply and implementing, well, that's the words that were, that you just repeated, implementing rules that have already been approved. But today's action is just about adopting this plan and directing us to submit it to EPA, and that action carries no fiscal effect. Like Michael Orman might want to.
Yeah, Commissioner, let's let Michael Orman also chime in.
Thank you Chair George. Commissioner Addington, good question. So just to add to that a bit, in comparison to the rule 340, 223 that was brought before you were part of the commission, again Commissioner Addington, that carried a fiscal impact, I believe, and was represented in the rulemaking process. And those outcomes from the rule as we implemented it is what's wrapped up into the State Implementation Plan, which is a summary of actions that we are taking to address regional haze long-term to help us get towards our 2028 goals. And so it's a, maybe another way of saying it is a summary report of the strategies that we're going to implement over time.
Thank you. Madam Chair, can I have a follow-up?
Yes, please.
Okay. Michael, while I got you, I think this might be coming your way. I'm just trying to understand the smoke component of all this. And so we have, I guess naturally occurring wildfire, and we have anthropogenic caused, you know, whether it's prescribed burning or slash piles or whatever that is. And I think what I understand is that the glide path is not adjusted because the recommendation is to rely on the work already done in the smoke management plan. Could you just talk to me a little bit about that? Because I'm having a hard time understanding. Like my recollection of the smoke management plan is that we, and this is the wrong terminology, but that we tried to make it a little easier to do prescribed burns. And that's going to contribute to regional haze. But it's also taking away from, you know, wildfire later on, you know, the material that would burn. So I'm, I'm spinning my wheels on this one. Any suggestions?
Will you take this one, Ellie?
Walk me through it.
Go ahead, Michael. Thanks Chair George, Commissioner Addington. The way that I would describe it is the Smoke Management Plan represents the state's strategy to prevent or reduce impacts from prescribed fire activity on a variety of different areas, on our smoke-sensitive receptor areas, which are communities throughout the state, and then our Class One areas, which are impacted by the Regional Haze Plan. And we have a lot of collaboration with our partner agencies, with ODF, with the Smoke Management Advisory Committee, with the Board of Forestry on the development of that plan. It's a collaborative process that we go through in developing it and implementing it. And I am blanking on the date when we updated it to incorporate the portion of the plan that addresses Class One areas. But the plan itself has strategies to ensure that we're protecting visibility from our Class One areas and keeping smoke out of those regions when we do prescribe fire. And so it was our recommendation to use that collaboration in the strategies that we put together in the plan that is now approved by EPA to maintain that visibility long-term and use that collaboration with our partner agencies to course correct the plan itself, while also monitoring visibility impacts long-term through the program.
Does that help Commissioner Addington? I think you're still muted Greg.
Thank you. I actually have another question, but I don't want to take up all the time either. So if somebody else wants to go.
Go right ahead.
So thank you, Michael, for that. And whoever, I don't know who to address this to probably. Well, so if I'm thinking about, let's just take Crater Lake for example. Karen, when you, early in your presentation, you talked about, you know, stationary sources and sort of their relation, distance to some of these areas, I believe. So if I'm talking, if I'm looking at Crater Lake, are there stationarys? I don't know if this is, are there stationary sources contributing to regional haze at Crater Lake? Do we know that? Or is it, you know, more of these, you know, wood smoke related issues?
Yes, and both. And Commissioner Addington, you know, within the the monitoring that takes place or the data that's collected at the monitoring stations, there is a great amount of analysis that takes place to try and discern the sources and the contributors to the various components of the regional haze pollutants that are detected at those monitors. And then there is, you know, additional very complex modeling that takes place that tries to essentially apportion the, it's called a source apportionment. And it tries to discern out again, you know, roughly how much pollution is projected to be coming from very broad categories. Like industrial sources, oil and gas is one sort of subset. Area sources, which would include wood smoke and prescribed fires. But it does, you know, try and give some idea of the degree to which different sources are contributing to visibility impairment. You know, granted, it's a combination of monitoring analytical work, like laboratory analytical work and modeling. But there is, there is, you know, information out there that helps us understand roughly what the contributions are to visibility impairment.
Deputy Director.
Thank you Chair George. I'm gonna take a stab at kind of going high level and down real quick and just see if it, if it helps at a high level. And you've heard Karen say all this, but I know it's, it's hard to follow when we kind of dive down into specific pieces. But the overall requirement that EPA has for states is that they be on a trajectory, meeting reasonable progress goals for regional haze in their state's Class One areas by 2064. So in order to meet that requirement, states need to monitor and model and do this apportionment that Karen's talking about. And once we have a lay of the land in terms of what, what are the issues that are impacting our Class One? our class one areas, we can then come up with a strategy that includes some of these longer term strategies and some short term strategies. And so the piece that is really before you today is a part of the short term strategy for stationary sources. So that we can submit this as part of Oregon's plan to meet our longer term strategy for regional haze. So the stationary sources are the piece that we have used these agreements. You've heard the term throughout SFO, which will be the new acronym for today, right? And so those are the agreements that we have with these particular stationary sources for that portion of the contribution to regional haze. Over time, if if we find that we have drastically reduced certain areas of our regional haze problems and or that others have increased, our strategies are going to need to shift as well, right? So I think, you know, this is also part of not changing that glide path. Changing that glide path would almost mask some of the pieces that are contributing to regional haze. We don't want to mask that. We want to say, what do we do if we're going to have more and increased wildfire? And and part of a strategy for more and increased wildfire is prescribed burning. And how do we make sure that that prescribed burning can be done in a way that it's causing less emissions than a wildfire would? So I I hope that's helpful to to some degree. On the PSL piece, just briefly, just as a reminder, because this is confusing, but sources and their permits may have a a limit for emissions that's higher than what they actually need and what they actually emit. So what a lot of these sources did is said, we're willing to take a reduction in in what is allowed in our permit. So that's where some of those emission reductions came from. So an increase, as as Commissioner Schlesser was asking about earlier, the increase would not be to that original permit limit. A possible increase could be to their actuals, but still only up to the allowed level in the permit that they've now agreed to. I hope I hope that's that's helpful.
Madam Chair, I will, I will stop there. I just, I'd just like to say that, and Leah, thank you. I you know, the hard part about this is that we read this stuff, we get to ask some questions, but now we have to vote and and I I have a lot of questions and I'd like to sort of keep going on this, but the policy decision has been made, and I understand what you just said, Leah, about the glide path, not moving the glide path. And I just I have more questions about whether that's the right move or not. Again, thinking about what you just said, Leah, about masking certain things. But I I guess my, I'm just concerned that with or without the smoke management plan, that ultimately this is going to affect our ability to manage the forest better for wildfires. And I, and maybe that's not true. And but that's what I, that's what's on my mind. So I will, I will stop.
Ali?
Thank you Chair George, Commissioner Addington. Just to put your mind at ease that we'll be back before you on this topic. This is, this this shall continue till 2064. I think there's a as Karen pointed out, there's a five year review, which is coming up on us pretty quickly. And also there's, we will get a head start on the 2028 plan. And, you know, we're not going to find ourselves in a, in this position of coming to you after the fact, after the due date for the next round of planning. We will bring the policy decisions before you hear it and and get get input on that. I think it's, you know, as you, we struggle with it at those same points. I think it's the our objective is to ensure that we protect the beautiful vistas in in this great state. And and you mentioned Crater Lake, that's, that's, you know, who who wants to go there and not be able to see across the lake? And and I think those, we're trying to avoid those conditions. I think we've managed the the smoke management plan. In Oregon, we hold it up as a model to other agencies. It's been very successful in allowing prescribed burns and while protecting air quality and visibility. We've done so successfully and we can continue down down that road. We're looking at a following other work groups that we created a biofuels work group that trying to look at alternatives, which are trying to expand our pathways of dealing with forest residues. And I think that's all part of the strategy that we'll bring with you so that we don't have the, our only option to deal with those forest residues is not, is not to pile burning and we can find other other alternatives. So I will bring those to you. And if it's helpful, Chair George will be happy to come before you with with a more of a lengthier explanation of of our thinking around around these lines.
Thank you, Ali. Are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners at this time? Commissioner Kyle?
I just kind of have a follow up question to what Greg was was asking about, and then also how it fits into the model. So it's a bit of a wonk question. So sorry about this, Karen. But when you're doing kind of the source apportionment and the models that put us in the glide path, that does take into consideration the the and I'm going to use the word loosening that we did with the wildfire smoke plan to allow for more prescribed burning. Right? So the the models that you did that put us on that path took into consideration the fact that we did make these changes about two, three years ago. And that that has been enacted. Correct?
Well, I'd like to first make a distinction between the source apportionment and the uniform rate of progress modeling. So those are two, two different models, essentially.
Okay.
Um, so regarding your question on does the uniform rate of progress projection modeling, does that take into account? And could I ask you to restate your question, Commissioner Kyle?
Yeah, so it's just, we did pass the the smoke rules a couple of years ago. So it's my understanding that those practices have been going on as much as they have in the last two years. So we have data now that hopefully is informing these models under kind of these new land use operating parameters. Or I hope we are, and I hope that that new data is part of the models, I guess is the question, like.
Right. So the the uniform rate of progress model is based on essentially two sets of information that we sent to the Western Regional Air Partnership that, again, in effect, were the ones that actually did the the modeling. The first was what's called essentially, it's called on the books regulations, but essentially, you know, what we have in place in 2019 and the the regulations that are projected to be in place for the rest of this implementation period. So that was called on the books. So that would include what you have just described, that changes that were made to the smoke management plan, source, stationary source permitting regulations, all of that that was on the books. The second sort of phase of that modeling is what strategies we would be putting in place. Additional controls would be put in place at the, at this point, moving forward. And that's called the potential additional control scenario. So, I mean, in in effect, both would contain regulations that are already in place. And the second one would be additional regulations that would be put in place. Does that answer? At least in part, answer your question, Commissioner Kyle?
Yeah, it is taking into consideration then the changes that we have made with regard to some of those land use practices that would be contributing to regional haze like prescribed burning.
I would, I would, sorry, I would just add one more qualification that the that most of the the regulations that are envisioned or depicted or input into those models are those that are enforceable, directly enforceable, and those will tend to be more of the regulations that are particular to stationary sources. So all all scenarios, I would say, would be more reflective of regulations on stationary sources than area source regulations. But all, looks like Michael has something to add to that as well.
He does. And I'll turn, I'll go to Michael here in just one second. This is really important discussion and we want to get everybody's questions answered. And at the same time, we have some other important conversations coming up as well. The TMDLs by rule in our public forum, which we always like to give as much time for as we can. So we'll go to Michael and then we'll just ask everyone, if you have additional questions or comments, let's try to keep them succinct so that we aren't cheating ourselves later in the meeting. Michael?
Thanks Chair George. And Commissioner Kyle, just to round out our our answer to your question, our modeling for the future, the 2028 scenario, like like Karen said, took into account rules on the books. And anything that we were planning to take action on before submitting our SIP to you for approval. One example of something that wasn't included in the model, but we think will have an impact on visibility long term is the commission's decision to approve the advanced clean trucks rule and the low nox omnibus rule recently. We see that as significant impacts that we want to track and report out on as part of our progress updates and potentially referencing future SIPs. But at this point, it's not included in the model. So our our progress doesn't take into account that action just because of the timing and sequencing of us drafting our SIP and getting it to you.
Thank you, Michael. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Well, we sometimes do have some rather complex recommendations. This is actually a a four part director is, and but of course, these are, these are interrelated because it has to do with incorporating other aspects of these plans and these implementation plans. So is is the recommendation that this motion would include all four of these points in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, seeing no other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Go for it, Commissioner Kyle.
Oh, I think I'll let you take your first one, Amy.
Thanks. I move that the commission adopt the 2018 to 2028 regional haze state implementation plan included as attachment D and approve incorporating the 2018 to 2028 regional haze state implementation plan into the Oregon Clean Air Act State Implementation Plan adopted under OAR 340-200 dash 40 and adopt the proposed rules in attachment A as part of chapter 340 of the Oregon Administrative Rules to reflect the amendment of the Oregon Clean Air Act State Implementation Plan and direct DEQ to submit the approved 2018 to 2028 regional haze state implementation plan to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for approval.
Well done. Do we have a second?
Good.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do we require further discussion before moving to a vote? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify same sign.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barasso, just forgive me, but I'm not sure I heard your vote. Are you for or against?
For.
For, okay. Then the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. All right, we are due for a short break. Can folks make do with a five minute break and we will return at 2:30? Great. See you back here at 2:30.
And for all attendees, this is Stephanie Caldera, Commission Assistant. The recording will be paused during the break and will restart when the commission reconvenes at 2:30. Thank you.
All right. Well, I hope everybody was able to stretch quickly. And so we will now turn it over to our next set of directors. I will let you all introduce yourself. This is our action item, TMDLs by rule. Welcome, everyone.
Good afternoon, excuse me, Chair George and members of the commission. I'm Jennifer Weigle. I am the Water Quality Administrator for DEQ. And I'll let Jean and Michelle introduce themselves briefly before we get started.
Good afternoon, Chair George, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Jean Foster, Manager of the Watershed Management Section, does TMDLs, Nonpoint Source and Source Water Protection for Drinking Water.
And good afternoon, Chair George and members of the commission. My name is Michelle Martin. I'm a project manager in water quality.
All right. Thank you, Jean and Michelle. And we'll go ahead and get started with our presentation. So Chair George and members of the commission, we are here with you this afternoon to provide DEQ's recommendation that the Environmental Quality Commission adopt the proposed rule changes for water quality total maximum daily loads in attachment A as part of chapter 340, Division 42 of the Oregon Administrative Rules. As part of our presentation today, we're going to include a brief introduction to total maximum daily loads, which are commonly called TMDLs. And also provide an overview of the rulemaking schedule and public engagement opportunities that proposed rule changes, a summary of the comments, and we'll conclude with our recommendation to the commission for their action. So by way of background, TMDLs. So basically, just to to give a brief overview, Oregon and all states are required to develop and then subsequently implement total maximum daily loads as one element of the state's responsibilities and requirements under the Clean Water Act. The TMDLs that Oregon prepares include an analysis and in the company, an accompanying written quantitative plan for attaining and maintaining water quality standards. And our current Division 40, Division 42 rules describe the elements that are required to be contained in a total maximum daily load. These elements include a calculation of the maximum amount of a pollutant that a water body can receive and still meet state water quality standards. TMDLs are also required to include allocations of portions of that amount of the pollutant to sources or sectors that we identify as part of our analysis. And they're also required to include a water quality management plan. And that plan is what provides the the framework for TMDL implementation to ultimately achieve those water quality standards. Also, just by way of background, since I referenced it a little bit, water quality standards by definition are, those are standards that we establish in regulation. And those include various in stream pollutant limits to protect uses that have been identified for the state's water bodies. These uses can include protection of fish and other aquatic life, protection for recreation, sources of drinking water and consumption of fish, among other uses. Using, using available data, available water quality data, DEQ every two years takes that data and compares water quality data to those water quality standards and assesses whether or not the quality of Oregon's rivers and lakes are adequate in order to meet those standards. So if waters are not meeting water quality standards, that those assessment conclusions are included on our integrated report. And included as part of the integrated report is a list of impaired waters. Sometimes you may hear that referred to as the 303D list. Once a water is placed, is identified as impaired on the state's 303D list, the Federal Clean Water Act requires states, or in some instances, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to develop a TMDL for each water body on the state's impaired waters list. So with that little bit of background, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Michelle to talk about the rulemaking process that we did on this topic.
Okay, thank you. Next slide. So here's a brief overview of the rulemaking schedule. DEQ held one advisory committee meeting for this rulemaking on September 2, 2021. The public comment period was for 60 days, ending on November 12, 2021. We held one public hearing where no one commented. During the comment period, we received several written comments, but I'll go into another slide during this presentation. DEQ provided notification using GovDelivery, DEQ's opt-in email notification. And now I'll turn it over to Jean.
So. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this is a brief overview of why we're proposing these rule changes. Oras 468B.110, the Oregon Revised Statute authorizes TMDLs with the water quality management plans to be adopted either as rules by the commission or as orders by the Director of DEQ. After this statute was enacted, the EQC decided to delegate TMDLs with the water quality management plans to the DEQ Director with the belief at that time was that this would expedite TMDL work and issuance by the agency. That has turned out not to be the case. Further, there's a lack of a clear public process for gaining input to TMDLs with the water quality management plans developed as orders, and this has shown to be a bit problematic at times. As a result, DEQ is recommending that the commission amend its rules to allow TMDLs to be developed through the rulemaking process with the final decision by the EQC. We also believe at DEQ that where there are more significant policy choices, TMDLs and water quality management plans generally should be considered as rules by the EQC, DEQ's policymaking body. Adding the option for TMDL development by rule does the following. It benefits DEQ and stakeholders through predictable and transparent administrative procedures associated with rulemakings, where TMDLs contain important policy considerations. Conducting rulemakings will also result in those issues being considered by the EQC, DEQ's policymaking body at the time of the EQC adoption. Proposed changes would align the rules with the statute and update the rule to be current with EPA requirements. Policy considerations by the EQC may include things like decisions on the allocations, that is, how much of a pollutant should go to point sources and non-point sources. Could also be consideration of authorities and programs to address non-point source pollution. Discussion could also include discussion of the pace and scale of TMDL implementation and the measurable objectives, timelines, and milestones in the water quality management plan of the TMDL that are important for implementing the TMDL for both point sources and non-point sources, and discussions and decisions on how the TMDL with the water quality management plan provide reasonable assurance that the water quality standards will be achieved. That is, that the TMDL will be implemented, allocations will be achieved, and then ultimately water quality standards. DEQ Director will make recommendations to the EQC for which TMDL should be adopted as rule by the EQC and which should be issued as an order by DEQ. The Director recommendation could be done during the rulemaking schedule and selection process done, already done with DEQ and EQC and the Director's report that's done annually. These recommendations could be based on court-ordered schedules for TMDL development to advance actions for improving water quality for human health or aquatic life, where there are concerns, or areas where there's a large number of point and/or non-point sources. The public or environmental areas are affected with TMDLs that cover a large geographic area, such as like the Willamette Basin. And now I'll turn it over to you, Michelle.
Thank you. Are there any questions so far?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Let's go to the next slide. So I will go over the proposed changes. The proposed changes to Oregon Administrative Rules, Chapter 340, Division 42, are to conform the EQC TMDL rules to statute and allow TMDLs and water quality management plans to be issued either as rule or as order consistent with Oregon Revised Statute 468B.110. Number two on the slide shows that in those cases of TMDLs in Oregon that are adopted by the EPA, DEQ is still responsible for a water quality management plan outlining how the TMDL will be implemented. EPA action to establish a TMDL for water bodies in Oregon would mean that the EQC can issue a water quality management plan by rule to implement EPA's TMDL or by the DEQ Director's authority to issue the water quality management plan by order. For instance, EPA recently issued a TMDL for the Columbia River, and DEQ will issue the water quality management plan. Number three on the slide refers to the proposed rules to clarify that daily load is required to the TMDL definition. Recent court cases have clarified that the TMDL must express loadings as daily loadings in addition to any other metrics, such as monthly or annually. The proposed rules also had clarifying language to reasonable assurances of implementation from the federal interpretation. In basic terms, reasonable assurance is when there are non-point source programs and authorities in place to implement the TMDL to meet load allocations and water quality standards. So reasonable assurance is a demonstration that a TMDL will be implemented by federal, state, or local governments or other entities through regulatory or voluntary actions, including management strategies or other controls. TMDLs need to show reasonable assurance to be approved by EPA. The updated language in the proposed rule is from the Chesapeake Bay TMDL Court opinion that EPA reaffirmed as direction for TMDLs for reasonable assurance. The proposed reasonable assurance language is consistent with EPA requirements for TMDL approval.
Michelle, so this reasonable assurance clarification, does it have any sort of timeline associated with it? This is one of the things that has been an ongoing concern to me that there have been times where it feels like we just refer to another agency's role or they're working on a plan, and yet sometimes years go by and we don't actually have something being implemented on the ground. So are there any time-based guidelines for this?
Jean, do you want to address that?
Certainly. Chair George, members of the commission. So the reasonable assurance language itself is that there's non-point source rules or authorities in place, and there's mechanisms in place for those. We call them designated management agencies, the non-point sources, to implement programs to achieve the load allocations. However, within our water quality management plan these days, more recently in the Willamette-Mercury TMDL Water Quality Management Plan, and then also in the Clamath and Lost River Temperature TMDL, we had measurable objectives, timelines, and milestones established for when we expect implementation to occur, and we're working with the DMAs for that. So we're expecting that additional clarity to be part of the reasonable assurance of the TMDL that's contained in the water quality management plan. It hasn't always been like that in our water quality management plans, but those are things that we're starting to incorporate now in the more recent TMDLs and TMDLs going forward.
Okay, so just to make sure I heard you correctly, Jean, it sounds like that time-based milestones and timeframes is an expectation for TMDL implementation plans going forward.
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions before I continue?
Commissioner Addington.
How long, I mean, is there an average time of development of a TMDL before it's ready for an order?
So Chair George, Commissioner Addington, it really depends on the complexity of the TMDL as to how long it takes to develop a TMDL. There's been some that we've been working on for years, others that we've been able to complete within 18 months to two years. So many, I think, and some of that is driven by the expediency of having court-ordered schedules as well. So as you may be aware, we have temperature TMDLs that we're redoing and replacing because of a court-ordered schedule. And we're going to be reissuing those over the course of the next, I guess, now six years now that we have left. And so each one of those, there's been a lead-in time, but there will be several of them, three, three every other year for the next six years or so. So I think a general guide is 18 to 24 months, but depends on the complexity.
And Jean, just as a follow-up to that, so we have had several cases where TMDLs that were written and had implementation plans, like as you say, that due to court challenges have had to go back and redo, make changes to. So that stops, am I correct, that stops any implementation activities because you have to go back and revise the goals. Is that correct?
Chair George, actually, when we've had instances of that, unless the court would say that implementation had to stop, and I don't believe that was the case in the more recent ones, we would want to continue to implement the TMDLs if implementation plans had already been submitted. So we would not want to stop those implementation. And we had, so we have moved forward on those, but I don't know about historic, how that would have played out. So the more recent ones, we've directed DMAs to continue to implement.
Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? Okay, please continue.
Okay, next slide, please. On this slide, I'll review a summary of the comments. DEQ received seven written comments that are in full in the appendix of the staff report. DEQ's responses to comments are also included in the staff report. Three of the seven commenters, including EPA, were in support of the proposed rule changes, while the remaining five commenters provided feedback on preferences and how the rules could be changed. Some of the comments were outside the scope of this rulemaking. This slide provides highlights of the comments, and I will provide a brief response. Number one, preference to continue TMDLs by order. In response, these proposed rule changes would allow TMDLs by order or rule according to Oregon Revised Statute 468B.110. Number two, ability to have meaningful judicial review if TMDLs are adopted by rule. And in response, judicial review, regardless of TMDLs by rule or order, is governed by the state's administrative procedures for rules or orders, which considers the process requirements and differences between actions that are issued by rules versus orders. Number three, clarifying that DEQ is doing the work on behalf of the commission. In response to discussions with the Rule Advisory Committee on this topic, as well as comments made during the public comment period, the proposed rules establish the work being done by DEQ on behalf of the EQC in the case of TMDLs by rule, similar to the work being done by DEQ on behalf of the Director in the case of TMDLs by order. And number four, preference and clarification in rule that a Rule Advisory Committee will be utilized when future TMDLs are adopted through rulemaking. This comment was previously made during the Rule Advisory Committee, and DEQ changed the proposed rules to ensure a Rule Advisory Committee in the case of TMDLs by rule. And number five, ensure a robust fiscal analysis, fiscal impact. In response, the rulemaking process ensures that DEQ will discuss the draft fiscal impact statement with the Rules Advisory Committee before going to public comment. To some degree, the extent and quality of analysis will depend on receiving quality information from participants in the rulemaking process. Okay, next slide.
So Chair George, members of the commission, we wanted to pause here to see if there was any other questions that the commission may have.
Vice Chair Barasso, did I see your hand? Sam, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Ah, sorry. There we go. I've got a handful of questions related to just the previous slide and some of the comments, but I think maybe just before going there, and this may relate to some of the actions we may take tomorrow on the agenda. What is the expectation in terms of which one of the TMDLs would move forward by rule versus by order? I mean, I do have, my concern certainly is the, just, I understand why there's both the transparency and the public process afforded by rulemaking, and yet not having full line of sight into how many of these are going to happen, how they're going to happen. I am concerned about just all of these coming to the commission, given that. So I know that there's an interaction with one of our latter action item on tomorrow's agenda. I think there is, and just would love to hear from Director Whitman on that, if that's up.
Thanks for the question, Vice Chair Barasso. I am going to pump that to our Water Quality Administrator, Jennifer Weigel, who I think probably is the best line of sight on the the long-term schedule for what TMDLs are coming down the pike.
Thank you, Director Whitman. Vice Chair Barasso, in terms of ones that we anticipate, Jean referenced that there are a number of temperature TMDLs coming. We have indicated that those are most certainly candidates for being adopted by rule. As Jean mentioned, we have a total of 15 TMDLs over the next six years. We're doing them in project areas in groups of three, basically simultaneously. And as Jean mentioned, every other year, we'll have kind of a group of three. And so I would anticipate our schedule for writing those in front of the commission and giving updates as the commission requests or is interested in prior to adoption. We would be treating those fairly similarly and kind of as a grouping. And because they are all temperature TMDLs and the pre-work that we've been doing, our approach to those, we anticipate to be very similar in terms of the types of analyses and policy decisions that we would be making amongst those TMDLs. So we can say that for certain. There are a number of other TMDLs that are kind of in the works that we would want to spend a little time going through the process that we described so that there is transparency with the commission about which direction we go for some of the other ones in the queue about whether they are orders or rule. So that is a follow-on item we would anticipate to take post our conversation and potential action today.
Commissioner Kyle. Oh, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, Jean.
No, my bad. And Vice Chair Barasso, just to add on is that we would anticipate, similar to the process we did with the Willamette-Mercury TMDL, to have regular briefings, informational items with the EQC to keep the EQC abreast of the TMDL development and policy choices and analysis that's being done so that it doesn't come all at once to the EQC as a black box.
We appreciate that, Commissioner Kyle.
So my question kind of is along the lines of TMDLs are quite technical calculations, and as commissioners, what kind of support are we going to get to be able to understand the nuances that go into the TMDLs and the technical aspects so that we can make a reasonable ruling on these? Because it does kind of go to that public comment, I think it was number two with regards to, you know, does this just become kind of a priority process, or do we actually, as commissioners, have say within regards to the inputs that are going into these TMDLs? So I think that's, I'm a little unclear what the role of a commissioner would be within this process.
Chair George and Commissioner Kyle, I'll take a little stab at that and then have Jean fill in on any additional important aspects of this. I think Commissioner Kyle, when I think about how we might bring these I think Commissioner Kyle, when I think about how we might bring these TMDLs to you, I think about some experience that we have also with other things like water quality standards that can be very data intensive and scientific analysis intensive and have significant implications for implementation as well. And so thinking about that a little bit, some of those, some of that, I think that informs our thinking to some degree about how we can bring information to you. I would expect the kinds of things that we would highlight for you as part of, you know, whether it's advanced briefings or as part of the rulemaking, again, we'd want to figure out how best to, to, to make the information salient and digestible, so you're not getting it all at once. But things along the lines of kind of important decision points in our analysis, kinds of key, key bits of data that we are bringing into the analysis, major sources in the basin, understanding to what degree this different sectors have been identified and their relative current contributions, anticipated future reductions that are necessary, factors that we went through in determining what the allocations were and determining the initial framework, which is the Water Quality Management Plan that then guides implementation. Those are the kinds of things that I would envision that, that we would, that we would want to highlight for you so that you can understand key pieces in that development process and where those, where those decision points, points are and the path that we followed in arriving, that, or are following in arriving at final allocations and expectations for implementation.
Director.
Yeah, thank you, Chair George, and thanks, Jennifer. So everything that Jennifer said, and in terms of those key decision points, just to give you a little bit of a flavor for that and how we might involve the commission in each of those. You know, initial key assumptions that go into modeling is always an issue in this work. So being transparent about that and making sure that there's a discussion about that, those things with the commission before we get too far down. That's one example. Having participated in a number of these, is, is the person issuing the order, I'll also say the allocations, deciding which set, how much of pollutant reduction goes to particular sources or particular groups of sources or groups of landowners. That's a, that's a mix of judgment around how much is feasible for those sources, and it's also to some degree an equity question. So that's exactly the sort of thing that having the commission have some involvement in, I think is important. And then this has already been mentioned by Jean and Chair George in your questions. On the implementation side, what are the metrics? What's the timeframe for those reductions to occur over? There's something in TMDL world called surrogate measures that are often used for metrics. So these are some of the key mix of science and policy that is involved in these TMDLs. There is a lot of technical work here, a lot of data. But I think it's going to be our obligation to work with you to figure out what's the right level and how do we get you involved at that level early enough so that you really are meaningfully engaged in this? And we're not just bringing it to you at the end of a, a two-year process. So I think as we begin this work, we will be coming back to you to talk about options for how to engage the commission at various stages in, in these TMDLs. I'll emphasize one other thing that Jean and Jennifer said. With the temperature TMDLs, we're going to be bringing them in batches. So three, groups of three, and the first one will be Willamette. So there will be, once we go through one or two of these, I think there will be more familiarity with the basic questions, issues, and to some degree, the science that goes in, into the work. But it's going to be, it's going to be a learning process. And I, you know, I think it's our responsibility to work with the commission to make that a meaningful process with you all.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner Addington.
Thank you. Wow, so I appreciate, Richard, I mean, you, you, you kind of addressed a couple of things I was going to say. I, I mean, as I sit here and think about this, I'm, I'm struggling with, you know, threading the needle. It feels like there is a role for us to be a little more engaged through the process and the development of a TMDL. But I am, I am not clear on the problem we're trying to solve here. Because I, I think it, I, I mean, I've heard transparency and people want to be heard, and I'm not sure how that becomes a lot different with the commission. I mean, I understand how our meetings run. I don't feel like right now we have a, a perfect process for engaging stakeholders on a specific TMDL and how long that would take at a commission meeting, and how do we get all that input? And I don't think any of us want to feel like we're in the position of rubber stamping anything. I mean, these are super complicated, long efforts that, that are important and that go on. So I, I just guess I'm concerned about that. I mean, I, obviously, I've read through this, I've looked at the comments. There are ten organizations on here that feel, on one letter, that feel like this is a bad move. And I just wonder, I guess for a question, whoever wants to take it, can anybody talk to me about the appeal process in an order versus a rule? And what, can we just go through what the difference is there and why some people feel like this would be a disadvantage to the folks they represent? If we've made a change here, because I'm not understanding the differences there.
Director.
Yeah, so I can do that at least at a high level. We do have Gary Vroom in here also. So Gary, please, if you hear anything that, that you think needs embellishment or, or clarification or correction, please jump in. But at a high level, on the front end, first of all, there really is no established required process for issuance of an order, and that's part of the problem here. Agencies issue orders almost every day, and you know, an order is a written final decision on something. And so there really isn't any standard process for issuance of an order, unless it goes into something called a contested case. And that's, that's a whole nother process that's relatively rare and typically involves a challenge to a decision around a permit or enforcement. So in contrast to that for rules, there is a very detailed set of prescriptions for process around rules. And it basically requires agencies to identify interests that may be affected by the rule and now more recently, communities that may be affected by a rule. And it doesn't absolutely require a rules advisory committee, but effectively it does. In practice, it really does. So we, so what, so again, the front end of the process for rulemaking is establishment of a rules advisory committee, some initial input from the rules advisory committee on the scope of the rule that the agency is working on and, and ideas about how to fix whatever the issue is. And then the final part of the work of the rules advisory committee is a really important piece that's been described already, which is preparation of a fiscal impact statement. And agencies are not required and typically not resourced to do independent research on fiscal impact. So having that input from the committee on fiscal impacts is a really important part of that exercise. So that, that front end of the rulemaking process just provides a good structure that for everybody understanding on the early part of development of a decision, how to, how to provide input. After the rules advisory committee has finished its work, that's then turned into a notice and a draft rule that then is published and goes out to a distribution list for public comment during a prescribed period, usually with a public hearing as well, at least one and sometimes more than one. And then, once all those public comments come in, the agency considers those comments, usually makes some changes in the draft rule in response to those comments. And then we'll bring the rule to the commission for a decision. Part of what we're talking about here today is how to, how to keep the, get the commission involved at the front end of that process also, so that there's familiarity with some of the key questions early on in the process. And there are lots of ways to do that, and they can run from informal briefings of a commissioner or commissioners. We can bring it to a commission meeting for a first briefing. We can ask one or two of you to actually attend a rules advisory committee meeting and listen and hear what people are saying. There are lots of ways to do this. And that's some of what I think we'll want to talk with you about here. At the back end, Greg, and I know this is a long answer to your question, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to give you the full picture. At the back end, once the commission or the director makes a decision, if I make this decision in an order, anybody can, any affected party can appeal that to any, essentially any circuit court in any county in Oregon. And we have situations where sometimes those appeals are filed in multiple circuit courts. And then, circuit court reviews the order. It is something called an order in other than a contested case. They can look at, they, they look at the decision, they, they look at whether it's supported by some, what's called substantial evidence. And if they disagree with the order, then they can either reverse it or send it back to the agency. The agency can then appeal that decision to the Oregon Court of Appeals. So a typical circuit court case will take a year or two, or I would say more like two right now, maybe sometimes even three or four. And then you've got a two-year process typically with the Oregon Court of Appeals to review that. So you can be looking at a really long period of time to get to finality about a decision. And that's part of the problem here, frankly. So in contrast with the rulemaking judicial review, it goes to the Oregon Court of Appeals directly from you on the record of the rulemaking. The Court of Appeals doesn't create its own new record. It looks at your record and it decides what, essentially whether it's in your authority, whether you follow procedure, and consider any, considering anything statute requires you to consider. So it's a little bit narrower scope of review also. And again, it takes typically close to two years to get a decision, but two years as opposed to six years. So you can kind of tell that probably from what I've just said that there are some advantages, both on the front end and the back end, I believe, for everybody with a clearer process around rulemaking for something like this. And it truly does involve some policy questions that to me are more appropriate for the EQC to decide. It may be at some point in the future, after you've worked through a certain number of these and you've established kind of where you want things to land, policy-wise, and we've really explored that with you, those things, maybe they start to come back to the director at that point. But there's enough, I think there's enough here in terms of policy questions. It's, it's really kind of right for some higher level of commission involvement. So I hope that's helpful. And Gary, please, did I do okay?
I, I think you did a good job, Director Whitman. I don't have anything to add on, on that unless, unless you have any more questions on the review process, Commissioner Addington.
So this is Kathleen. I'll just share one thought that appeals to me about reinstating this option, which, and I think again, we're not anticipating that, that all TMDLs would necessarily go to rule. But the additional transparency for all parties, for me, is potentially, and the procedural clarity for how groups or people or potentially people who think they're going to be impacted can come to the same table, know their opportunities for participating in a rules advisory group, know their opportunities for providing input, bringing their science to the table. Some folks on the commission will remember that in, in the past, we've gotten into these situations where people have foregone their opportunity to come essentially to the TMDL table and provide their input or their science. They've waited for the TMDL to develop, and then they've objected at the end and said, oh, wait, we think we have science that is different and it's, it's better than yours and, and we want to challenge your modeling. I think for me personally, one of the things about being really transparent about what the process will be and how entities can participate in some cases, I believe, will increase the clarity procedurally for how, how people come to the table and provide their inputs. So that's just two cents for, for one person who's been in, involved in TMDLs for perhaps, perhaps way too long. That's, that's entirely possible. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Addington.
Thank you. I, I don't disagree. I, I guess I just feel like the transparency can be laid out regardless of which methodology we're using here. I mean, we can, we can let people know how best to participate. What I don't understand is how we as commissioners are going to adequately engage and adequately understand stakeholder positions on this. And I'm not saying we can't, and maybe that's been involved in the RAC or, or in another method. But I would just like to, I would like to have that laid out ahead of time before we say, you know, let's launch, and if it's broken, we'll fix it later. I'd rather just have a meaningful discussion on what that looks like now as a, you know. I don't know. I, I just, I guess we can do it either way. And I, and I understand that some TMDLs may remain in the form of an order from the director. But, but we haven't, we haven't talked about what that looks like. And maybe, maybe it's, we don't know. I don't know.
No, I, I hear you. I think those are important points. And maybe before this is starting to be implemented, I think maybe I heard this. Let me know if, if I was wrong about that, but that there are some ideas on the table. The department agrees that those decisions are not made yet, but that maybe it needs to come back for further discussion, maybe a list of suggestions. And then we develop those ideas together with input from the commission. And if that's not right, feel free to, feel free to let me know. Director.
Yeah, thank you, Chair George and Commissioner Addington both. So one thing that I'm realizing probably isn't clear to you, we haven't talked really about the specific schedule, although Jennifer did a little bit. Right now, and Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but there is, we don't have any TMDLs coming, proposed to come to the commission this year. Right? Okay. So we, what I'm saying is we have a little time to work out. So we, what I'm saying is we have a little time to work out how, what what structure do we want to set up to involve the commission early in the process and later in the process? And what does that look like? Can I? We, you know, I threw out some early ideas that we've been talking about, but I would suggest we actually bring this that piece of it back to the commission here in the near future for discussion. I I, we do not want to put something hard and fast in rule, however, that locks us into a particular model for what that looks like in terms of commission involvement. Because I frankly, I think this is gonna, it's gonna depend partly on the complexity of the TMDL. You and we are both also going to learn as we do this, and we're going to want to adaptively manage what that looks like, to use that term overuse term. So what I would like to do is bring an informational item back to you, informational slash looking for your input on how to meaningfully engage the commission at a future commission meeting and get that decided. And then we can work, work with you on implementing it and adjust it over time is is appropriate.
Vice Chair Brasso.
I thank you for this discussion and Commissioner, I can appreciate just hearing, 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 hearing that what this is bringing up for you. I know that there's a good bit of TMDL work, and I can appreciate, Richard, you saying they're not going to come necessarily this year. I know that there's just, there's a good bit of work there. And I don't know what the interplay of this is just with our timelines by which we need to complete some of those TMDLs. My, I would like that coming back to that conversation, Richard, so that we can map and map that out. My my concern is if there are other competing things driving the timeline that we just don't get enough time to to preview the content and it just takes a lot of planning to be able to, you know, have us have enough touch points prior to requiring action, you know, prior to us really needing to take action on a TMDL. So it's it's just that it's a it's a longer planning horizon that we have to be engaged in. And I think that's what I'm hearing, you know, talk about how do how do we do it? But also that's maybe the ask is to maybe to just spend some time in making sure we know which ones are coming up next and what that timeline looks like.
Jennifer.
Yes, Chair George, and just as a putting in a marker in the in the timeframe discussion for the temperature TMDLs that are under a court order, that first grouping is we would be bringing those in front of the commission, assuming assuming all of these, all of these conversations here proceed as we've been talking about. That would be the end of 2023. So and I so that's, that's, like I said, that's one group that we've deliberately, you know, been kind of thinking about in terms of being amenable to this process. There are some other ones in flight, but we can, you know, we would intend to be more deliberate about about that decision making. But for those important temperature ones, that's the timeframe on those.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think that's really helpful, and I think that allows both the the commission and the director to look, look at the time between now and then and and kind of lay out a roadmap for how do we have these conversations? And create those expectations so that they're appreciated both by the public and by the commission, and we know how to fit that into our agendas between now and then. Any other comments or questions? All right. Keeping an eye on the clock, yes, I do think we'd better consider the recommendation that's been placed before us. Does anyone wish to make a motion in regard to the proposed recommendation? Commissioner Kyle.
So I am willing to make a recommendation. It does seem though, like there were some questions about further discussion and timelines and things like that. And so before I do say anything, I'm wondering if there is a feeling like this should be postponed until we do have kind of some of those details worked out. I'm not sure where that fits into, I'll kick that back to the chair.
Well, that's all right. Thank you for the question. I appreciate it. So Commissioner Addington, did I see your hand flash there?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna ask Richard if if that was what he is recommending that we, because that's what I would like to see is that we have a little more discussion on this, about what it's going to look like before we before we do it.
Okay, that's a, that's a great question, and I'm just gonna add to it so that the director can respond to both. And if we were to delay, does that create any other problems in regard to the department's planning? So if it's possible to address both those, that would be great.
Well, Chair George, Commissioner Kyle, Commissioner Addington, we can, we can work with that. I just you know, kind of from a project management standpoint, trying to take this piece by piece, it it adds uncertainty into our planning that we're trying to, we're trying, we are trying to line up these pieces right now. And if we don't know for sure that you are willing to do at least some of this work by rule, it makes it very difficult to plan. So that that's the problem. I understand the desire to have more clarity about what the commission's involvement is. And as I've already said, I think we want to bring back a specific proposal for for conversation with you all. I will note, this decision on this rule change does not commit you to take any particular rule or TMDL by rule yet. That's a separate decision that we will be bringing to you subsequently. So all you are doing in this action today is opening up at least the possibility of that. So I think my preference is frankly, that you act on this proposal today. And I believe you have directed me already to come back with a specific proposal around the details of process, probably together with a schedule for specific TMDLs so that we can have a meaningful conversation about that. But it's kind of a separate and subsequent decision.
Do you think that's a valuable clarification? I get my understanding is was presented in the materials is the authority to go either way in terms of establishing TMDLs is in the original authorization, the original authority for the state to issue these TMDLs, either by rule or by order. So this is just essentially kind of reinstating that original flexibility and authority, the matter of which TMDLs will actually be taken on by rule and according to what schedule, I think probably is a separate matter. So that's a, that's a helpful clarification, at least for me. Any other thoughts? Commissioner Addington.
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't want to make anything more difficult for anybody. I don't like when people do that to me, but I don't know, it just, it just feels like a cart and horse thing for me. And I I think if we, if we adopt this, we're saying this is what we're going to do. I just, I mean, that's, that's, that's where we're headed. I understand what Richard just said, there's still an opportunity for us to put the brakes on if, you know, if we don't want to adopt, take on a particular TMDL or whatever it might be. I just I just want to let you know where I'm at.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Director.
Thanks, Chair George. And I, you know, I think, I think staff and Director Whitman are certainly covering everything here. So I hesitate to weigh in, but just, you know, I've read the comments also, and I just thinking about DEQ's work and the things that we bring to the commission over the years and you know, TMDLs are complicated and there is a lot of technical work involved. And that's really similar to a lot of our other work as well. So when we bring you rules, cleaner Oregon and all of the toxicity reference values, for example, regional haze and all of the modeling and the orders, where we are bringing you a package of work that does include a lot of technical work behind it. And I think our job is to really boil that down for you so you know, okay, at what points in this process was DEQ's data and processes accepted? And at what points in the process did people have concerns or comments? So that that is what you would be hearing, I think, on the TMDLs is, you know, the rack is going to happen, DEQ brings you information on what they said. The comment period happens, we bring you information on what happened there. So just to, I just wanted to pull it back just a little bit and say, you know, I think we would really be in a position to have to make sure that you can understand the information and that you're not reading thousands of pages of, you know, technical information in doing these, just like with all of our other rulemakings and our other work.
Well, thank you, Leah. The EQC is a rulemaking body, so that's, that's a helpful reminder as well. Commissioner Schlesser.
Thank you, Chair George, and and thank you, Deputy Director. That was really helpful context. Personally, I agree with the chair. I think that transparency is important. I think public process is important. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm a proponent of this approach. And I also appreciate that we're not locking ourselves into adopting all TMDLs by rule. And I'm comfortable with getting more information and working out the actual specifics in the future.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kyle.
It seems like that comment was addressed in which he said, like to move forward with recommending that the commission adopt the proposed rule amendments in attachment A as part of chapter 340, Division 42 of the Oregon Administrative Rules.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do we require any further discussion before taking a vote? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for this very thoughtful discussion. It is, it is all important, and I really appreciate the careful thought that everybody puts in to these decisions about about how we're going to move forward together. I think the director said that he has heard that the commission really wants to hear more detail about how this will unfold. And we will talk to him and staff in more detail about the timeframe over the next year that that could happen. And while that is critically important, we also want to get on to our public forum because we always like to provide as much time as we can to hear from the folks who are sharing their time with us today. So Stephanie, you usually help us by setting up how this is going to roll out and reminding everybody about how they can participate.
Yes, and thank you, Chair George. This is Stephanie Caldera, your commission assistant. For public forum, our typical time limit is three minutes. We do adjust that based on the total number of people who sign up to comment. If you are attending and would like to comment today, please press the raise hand button. It's typically in your reactions panel if you're connected by Zoom. If you are connected only by telephone, please press star nine on your telephone. And that will show me again your hand. I'll take a brief pause here to count the total number of raised hands.
Actually, I'll lower my hands. I don't confuse it, but if it's okay, Chair George, I just want to comment that I do have have to go lecture at four, so I will be probably leaving before the public comment ends. So I apologize for those that I miss, and I really do appreciate folks that do come and talk to us.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We do know that you have a prior commitment. Vice Chair Brasso.
Just heads up, I likewise will probably have to leave about four, 10, 4:15. I'll try to stay on the phone for for daycare pickup, which I'm off for today.
I certainly understand and appreciate that. We'll get underway here just as soon as we can. I know that Stephanie is counting as we speak.
And thank you, Chair George. This is Stephanie Caldera, your commission assistant. Based on what we have on our screen right now, we have three people with their hands raised to present comment. And Chair George, when you are ready, I can call the first person for their comment.
Yes, please go ahead and do that, and welcome.
And thank you. Our first person today is Dale Feek.
Welcome, Dale.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
We sure do.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair George, Vice Chair Brasso, Commissioners Kyle, Addington, Schlesser, and Director Whitman. I'm Dale Feek, Chair of Washington County Citizen Action Network. In your director's report, Richard Whitman, you stated that Natalie Nava joined DEQ in December 2021 as the DEQ Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. And that a DEI council has been formed and that Natalie has substantial experience in working with large organizations to help integrate DEQ into the workplace and that the DEI council has 14 members selected from a pool of applicants from the agency. Under the leadership of Catherine Tarrington, Chair of Washington County Commissioners, the county established a similar position. In September 2020, after a nationwide search, Latricia Tillman became Washington County's first chief equity and inclusion officer who is overseeing the new Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement and efforts to operationalize diversity, equity, and inclusion across all aspects of the county's public service mission. As a former Chair of the City of Forest Grows Sustainability Commission, I am pleased that both DEQ, EQC, and Washington County are taking necessary steps to bring equity to the many social and environmental decisions that you have to make, especially in these trying times of the COVID pandemic. So I congratulate you on that and keep up the good work. Also, I sent you an email related to what I just said, in that I put the link to Director Whitman's report. And I just appreciate the clarity of his writing and also what he has to say. I'm really in support of Jennifer Wiegle being named as Division Administrator. I got involved knowing her when I was attended the Blue Ribbon Water Commission meetings many years ago, and I've been impressed with her ever since. So congratulations on that. I also like the what you wrote about the Owens-Brockway Portland issue and how it's being addressed by DEQ. So keep the good work and also the Western Region Eugene, the J H Baxter Plant, and how DEQ is helping people solve environmental justice issues related to those plants. So thank you for the work you do as volunteers on the commission and also as DEQ staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chair George. The next person who we have on our speakers list is Ben Kirsch.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chair George, and good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ben Kirsch, and I am testifying today on behalf of the Deschutes River Alliance. I'm here to ask for clarification and information related to the commission's order from its October 2021 special meeting. At that meeting, the EQC ordered DEQ to bring an agenda item before the commission that would invite the DRA and other stakeholders in the Lower Deschutes Basin. the DRA and other stakeholders in the Lower Deschutes Basin to discuss the water quality issues affecting the river there before March 2022. The DRA was heartened to hear the EQC's very serious interest in the topic, and that through its order, it was ensuring that a thorough and rigorous examination of the issue would occur sooner rather than later. And we were further relieved to hear that the EQC's repeated urgency on the matter and that providing clean water for the Lower Deschutes and its fishery was a stated goal of the commission. But unfortunately, the DEQ has or the DRA has not received any information about this DEQ-led conversation as of yet. We were hoping to see an agenda item at these February meetings, but one was not included. And likewise, we have not received the invitation from the DEQ on this conversation. And with less than a month before that March 2022 deadline, all we are seeking right now is details about that conversation, specifically the date, the format, and the specific topics that will be covered. So thank you for your time and your continued attention to this matter, and we're looking forward to continuing this discussion with you all soon. I'm happy to answer any questions you have for me right now, or I can take them offline at a later date. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ben, for bringing that back to the table. Perhaps during the director's report, we can touch base upon that and the plans for moving forward. But we do appreciate you bringing that back to the table and keeping that on the agenda. Thanks for your help.
And thank you, Chair George. This is Stephanie Caldera, your assistant. The next person I have on the speakers list, their display name is Susannah Gladwin.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you all for hosting this and taking my comments. I'm new to this. I'm from the northwest corner of Clatsop County, the Soil Water Conservation District, I Director five. I would like to see more monitors. I know that we are not impacted as Portland is by the fires and other things that come down the Columbia River Gorge. But when an east wind is blowing, they make it all the way down to the ocean. Maybe not in the same concentration. So I would like to have more monitoring. And I'm a little puzzled. I'm I'm really not good with this whole process. I have to admit. But I was puzzled why there there was a vote before comments. I would think it would be the other way around. And then I have a request for DEQ. You have under TMDLs, I think it is of ammonia and sulfites. Shoot, there was a third one. And yet, in the system for testing for the spray, for spraying, application herbicide, pesticide applications, I don't believe that there's a very good testing protocol. And I know that on the private forest accords, they're addressing that. But I want DEQ to be also addressing that so that there is a way to know in a realistic fashion so that we know what's being sprayed, we know the window for testing for things being applied, and make a reasonable so we can have a reasonable testing program to test these chemicals. And thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us.
And thank you, Chair George. This is Stephanie Caldera, your Commission Assistant. At this time, I have no other speakers in my list. I would put out the note that if anyone is here to present comment during public forum, to please use the raise hand function on your reactions panel on Zoom. If you're connected by telephone, you may use star nine to do the same. And Chair George, this is again Stephanie Caldera, your Commission Assistant. At this time, I see no additional raised hands in our speakers list today.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you to those folks who have taken their valuable time to come and share their thoughts with us today. This is always a very important part of our meetings. Well, hearing that we have no further commenters today, I think we will go ahead and recess. We will come back together again tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM to complete our agenda. And so, everybody, please have a good evening, and we will see you back here at nine o'clock tomorrow.
And thank you, Chair George. With that, I will close the recording for today, and we will reconvene at 9:00 AM on Friday, February 4.